Hello everyone, welcome to I A C. So target S S C G L C H S L, English Session eleven discuss here we will. Let us start. So my key on the first one. Alright, my key fill in the blanks already, let us answer this one, right? His boss explained the procedure to him in a dash detailed manner, okay? And I put a first aid like my key, E blank low, E part so speech to all of them, right? Manner, manner my key empty noun, manner my key empty noun. Noun moon then I will addjecto, capital key what is the addjecto? So my key blank low a che word, E blank low a che word my key one modify yes in the. Manner not detail not detailed modify yes, right? Detailed my key empty addjecto, capital my key which is there you know, Eka, adverb by under, Ema under the adverb, okay? So capital E blank low my key in a valent adverb call, okay? Let us answer this, right? First item my key, adverbs, exactly, I don't know, right? Narrowly my key empty adverb, okay? So harrowing my key empty adverb, how to name, man a keprana, sorry? Addjecto key, L Y R just the, Ema what is the adverb, okay? Addjecto key, L Y R just the adverb both, but it is one de possibilities. My substance my key empty noun, Kada, substance my key a pocho, material a pocho, okay? Material name and substance, Ema noun, noun, Ema but a nechu eliminate chet, meaning my key empty material, Ema. A solid stuff name, Ema, 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 so my substance, okay? Key what is Eka, primitive, primitive my key empty the addjecto, okay? Primitive my key empty addjecto, primitive empty ancient, okay? Old time name, Ema, Ema, primitive, primitive technology, Ema, ancient technology, Ema. Capital E, addjecto capital E, Godman cancer, my key adverbs in a new, narrowly, quote, endi, harrowingly. If true, E boss and I, I, I key, E have explained, so, Eka, Eka procedure explained, Eka. A procedure, Ema, narrow, Eka, detailed, Ema, narrowly detailed, Ema. Detailed Eka, narrow, Eka, suit out, no suit, Kattle, Ema, capital E.
for the last four years chance only for the last four years for the last four years catch them again definitely article there are valley for the last four years and I'm about to article missing the but see also answer what manki option B for last year last four years for the last four years or catch someone can only definite article there are only come on to answer you want to know option behind the specific E four years and we manki ever four years called it last four years a specific four years which my turn about tea there should be a definite article cabinet so for the last four years come on to answer what manki option B now let us go for the next question A question right manki A question can you understand what you can activate passive way sorry guy manki present say active as passive as chase it up do I'm up to just never gonna manam subject to verb object subject make a watching the company okay verb may watch in the has offered update change in the me in change in the a job okay we're gonna two updates on a no cana so has offered him offer this arrow job offer this arrow come on to them and I'm gonna direct object out in the water in the direct target ever go for this arrow not go for this come on to them and I'm gonna in direct target out no cana it good but right so the company manki subject out in the has offered verb out in the ever go for this arrow job offer this arrow but direct target out in the ever go for this arrow not go for this arrow but they want me in direct target manki present say so active version passive way chase up in a system subject not object just some object in a system subject just some and manki one of the objects on a corner in the passive way so stay one of the passive way so soon two others and manki any passive which possible to only two passive which possible to only and manu enjoy change in a camera you E mini update is gonna consider J Chirande okay passive way right job and go to consider J singco passive way right come on to manki any possible to know that two possible to know but option A which are so dumb option on it like a woman can you know I you know on it like I you know well then I'll do this gonna to mean consider J Saro job ni so skip this not okay okay we're gonna job on the corner we're gonna skip this not to mean skip this see job in consideration but actually any possible to know two possible to know that good but okay but when you add them into means this preveying the I think I'm gonna get watching the manki has offered manki put in a sorry active voice low manki put in a sorry active voice low has plus V three but can't be has plus V three was say passive way so manki end up has it up so have it to has legend have it to we wanna go manki voice M mark or the time mark good and they like has it up how it's subject but has gone have gone down to plus send away Lee Bean drawal in the valley Bean drawal plus send away Lee V three it me tell you though in the has have plus been plus V three you're gonna get my turn I go into my turn I go into chipper to I was I I hasn't I have an Tama have on the pally I have been even only offered I have been offered you're watching I have been offered I have been offered I has rather than I to has rather than I was just a rather manky watching the has manki active voice so either helping me up on the either time on the time or help me up more but it's a manki was ra good to pony have being on Tama if put good a if put good a half form third one can you know the V three month no under again V four raggy put good a rather than though in the half form third always manki under the V three under again V four under good but manki dear I was so answer what manki obvious I have been offered a job by the company I suppose but then it in the income of our age and if we're gonna say some I in this corner mini outdoor consideration that Allah can enjoy change in a a job and use preveying the a job has been okay a job has been offered a job has been offered to me by the company and you put to me by the company and he in go possible to go on but option A led but not only problem but so you go for possible to name when you put to a job has been offered to me by the company that's also fine right and the two others on a per two passive way man possible I tell you okay anyway anyway manki next question so dumb right that's what I'm gonna say it's manki can't be direct speech indirect speech okay let us answer this one manna asked Rohan have you sat in a trolley bus before okay and I put on key first minute up the jay Smink and the speech question low reporting verb may watch in the watch in the ask ask them again TV two okay come on to past past which in the government can you know the back shift in the back shift unless they are facts okay manki back shift if you don't know that each in a statement in the fact I know then the gender statement I know then a habit I know then a time clause which in a up to manki in the manki in the tense change on the other ways there should be a tense change right but have you sat in a manki have a me Polly had a Polly okay having a woman I'm gonna have a Polly first point next one can't be chill manki and the question a statement of question and to manki present say manki present say direct speech low okay direct speech low question which in that question they have on the first helping there going to the third one to the subject with with but okay if put in a say manki direct speech like question is question and what can I want to know the first helping their boss in the third one to the subject to over the name on the question they watch the have have manki and the helping you manki and the subject helping up as such as you know manki and the question manki present say direct speech low helping up plus subject to stay indirect speech which is said in a port this statement type of the statement and they want to run the money keep first year on daily subject under the third one to the helping up on daily E point is still important although in the so manki direct speech low helping up as subject another casta in that we say me Polly subject plus helping up by Polly next year on daily tense and a the so they want the present perfect casta me Polly pass perfect I Polly my kid inka point seven under so dumb right so dumb first year on the show manna asked Rohan whether important can't be no cause man can't be if put good a direct speech like question up do in that speech over can I go to the that draw good than they know good do that draw good but option A me can answer that can finish in the corner I mean eliminate that place me can I watch and E if Gani whether Gani well I yes or no questions say the if Gani whether Gani so the other double H questions that they want to manki double H words anyway so dumb right so manna asked Rohan whether he had sat in a trolley bus earlier okay chance on the it's true right next B to the manna asked Rohan had he but you're watching the had he had he both manki question I put in the man you know so direct speech like question similar speech I mean for the statement I Polly can I had here and then manki and the had he question I put in the come on to had he ra good the gavati manka option B answer God okay proceed to see the manki on the manna asked Rohan if she if he sat manki may pull it how you so manki present perfect I mean for the past perfect I Polly they want the so past in the simple past in the but tense change so good but see eliminate next right manna asked Rohan if he has manki watch in the have watch in the present perfect do you want to present perfect mally present perfect ra good present perfect I mean for the past perfect I Polly come on to D could a customer me gonna on the so my direct yeah choose just coach and even elimination just the enjoy to yeah choose just coach anyway manka answer you want to know option E okay now let us go for the next question correct tenth question right tenth question I watch you you're gonna E D M I get E D M meaning I get right so in the E D M today manki Ria has tried hard not to steal her brother's thunder okay I'm gonna analyze what I'm gonna on the steal someone's thunder watch on key steal someone's thunder at a meeting and E suppose everyone say so while like a rava credit me manam this gonna man go on the name on the steal someone's thunder and though in the actual deserved candidates deserved candidates already on taro while like a rava credit in Gani while like a rava nekline Gani while like a rava applause in Gani manam ponthe manam ponthe the name on the steal someone's steal someone's thunder and for alone to meaning manki I was soon though I demand so so the first one no take away her brothers opportunities for jobs no opportunities no can I'm gonna can't be applause come out to success come out to what you say I opportunity you post get more recognition than her brother for their success even a chance on the recognition applause and recognition appreciation I put that actually on the get a big reward from her brother no reward one chapter brother all brother card no it because actually pick up her brothers lucky charms to win yes or no it go manka God and come on to so manka answer you want to know obviously E okay take away her brother sorry yeah card manki and the so B B is the answer right get more recognition than her brother for their success and while brother success I may go to success any cook create go to the I'm kill to come on to the name on the steal someone's thunder and so easy one right so for this question our answer is what option B now let us go for the next question so manki on the 11th one can't be so spotting ready guy let us answer this one so manki on the people believed wrongly that the moon was hot and the sun was cool and I put in the can't be E question they're in some manki add W placement some so dumb people manki and the subject believed manki and the verb wrongly manki and the adverb wrongly manki and the adverb actually can't be that the moon was hot and the sun was cool then I'm gonna get object out in the out in the come on to the can't be lengthy object a short object lengthy object and so lengthy and then Baga so long on the lengthy object and so people subject to believed object E no that the moon was hot and the sun was cool that object out E believe to E believe to that the moon was hot and the sun was cool that the link the you know watching I put E adverb I mean then but good where book and moon la ante first subject to the subject was in the adverb sunny after what was manki main version okay subject subject adverb at main at was in the lengthy object the name on the lengthy object and if put in a lengthy object so manki adverb under subject verb much though in the come on to the people believed wrongly who know people wrongly believed okay people wrongly believed that the moon was hot and the sun was cool come on to problem watching wrongly believed okay come on to option manki D people believed wrongly I'm gonna on the people wrongly believed so answer is what option D now let us go for the next question you're gonna can't be direct speech indirect speech sorry guy let us answer this one he said to me I have lived here for most of my life and I put first one I'm gonna reporting on the said to said to can't be V two which I'm gonna back shift soon back shift back shift I'm gonna tension change I have lived you're watching I have lived I have lived on a present perfect present perfect I mean for manki past perfect I mean for manki past perfect I was he told me that he has I'm gonna mally present perfect which you're watching he had lived past perfect I'm gonna he had lived I'm gonna present perfect ra good he had lived I'm gonna past perfect any possible B Gani D Gani so eliminate when has lived present perfect have lived present perfect in fact he have anyway my present perfect I'm eliminate some I'm gonna remaining what choose he told me that he lived there for most of his life he told me that he lived there for most of my life so I know I live you say I live you say come on to I know good I know his life I know is my he he life can I his life I'm just I come on to answer option B okay now let us go for the next question so that that no spotting ready guy let us answer this one so no new content can be developed at this time with much production activities coming to your heart okay come on to heart and so complete stop on a heart problem so dumb right problem I'm gonna much watching in the much concept just much right in the little what sorry note this normal so normal I'm gonna two much in many I will in little in few you I bit difference first quantity Gani number you much Gani you quantity Gani number Gani few Gani you choose suppose I'm gonna girls so girls not many girls and many girls in the girl countable and countable now many was countable was many but suppose but much much knowledge many and much knowledge but uncountable I'm gonna was okay countable many uncountable much actually I'm gonna few girls little few girls little then pill good few number but few and if countable I then knowledge few and little little knowledge but uncountable it I'm gonna countable few then uncountable I tell little I'm gonna so when pause to pause to manki pause to comparative on the super later good I'm gonna much many much many comparative degree and okay much many I'm gonna more out in super degree I'm gonna most it so many fast degree I'm gonna comparative more super degree most I you're watching little compared degree less out less super degree least okay I will few compared I'm gonna few okay super degree few E point tell you we challenge I'm gonna examine so more I want so 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 most I know I'm gonna and so so many in the put pause to question I want so more so so I'm gonna manki present say so Gani inka very Gani inka to Gani I want pause to come on to so more so 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 more so many I want so 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 but questions I want catch this so E compare degree countable uncountable you come but it I'm gonna manki question okay manki question I'm gonna activities I'm gonna activities activities activities